Open session public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, our first appointment's at 7:15. So, why don't we go through approvals? This is appointment.
Approvals or just the minutes?
Oh, no, the agenda.
I don't have any minutes on here. Oh, there's second. Town census. This is from the town clerk's office. The annual census for 2017 has been mailed to all households in town. Please complete the forms and return them to the town clerk's office as indicated in the mailing by January 30. Mary was very busy.
Yeah.
I didn't have a chance to read all of these. So, we'll do this next week?
Yep.
The minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Unless...
Yeah, I haven't had a chance.
I mean... Okay, all right. Oh, the Devon's meeting is moved from this Wednesday to next Wednesday. What was that message that said, "Good morning Thatcher can do the 11th"?
Oh, that's just all the different towns chiming in saying whether they could do the 11th, and it sounds like there's a consensus for next Wednesday. I just had to check with you to see if anybody...
What is the meeting about? Do you know?
It's just a regular admin board meeting each month.
No, but I mean, last month they took a vote, which we couldn't participate in.
Right. We don't get agendas in advance, so it's hard for me to exactly guess. I'm sure there'd be a Townsend update, and then we would be online by then.
Should be a Berlin update.
All right. I'll put it in my calendar. But what, I thought we were gonna be ready on the 5th?
We are flipping the switch on the 5th.
But it doesn't look like they changed?
There's some little hiccup on the door in the lobby, but it's gonna be done more. It won't be done by the 5th, but it will be done. They've been in working, running a lot of the wiring for all the access control and things, but they're a little bit behind schedule.
Doesn't have anything to do with another town, does it?
It actually does not. It has to do with the contractor.
Okay. All right. I'll put it in my calendar. We have a warrant, a refund for real estate FY '17 for $1,234.23. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We have the liquor license report that we send into the state, which says that we have four all alcohol restaurant licenses, Good Friday's, Flat Penny, One Tang Grill, and what's the BCC?
Berlin Country Club.
And the Berlin Country Club. We have two all alcohol package store licenses, Dagnall's and the Liquor Barn. Then we have three beer and wine package stores, Berlin Liquors, The Wine Cellar, and Verk Enterprises. And that is our annual report. I don't think we...
That there's no infractions.
No infractions.
Okay, move to issue the report.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a common vitulers license for Cinnabon. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So, moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We have a lot of responses. I don't know if everybody got a chance to read them. These need to be in by tomorrow.
Yes, that is true.
Okay.
The one we don't have is the fire chief yet. I'm not sure if he's here tonight. Is fire having a meeting tonight?
Ah, there were some lights on downstairs. I don't know who's here.
There was a departmental meeting about it this morning, but I was swimming upstream, so I wasn't able to get to it.
Well, I saw that at...
Last night.
Yeah.
That was the email problem. I couldn't forward it to you sooner, but...
So, we have one from Planning Board, Recreation, and the School Committee. Do we want to approve sending these letters? Did you write one from us?
No.
And these are in tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can draft something tonight.
Okay, well...
Yeah, and if you want, I can look at it in the morning and add anything.
Well, I can give you, take a vote to let Thomas approve the letter?
Approve the letter he's going to write?
The cover letter for the...
The letter that we haven't written yet.
Well, I mean, basically, you know, let's, you know, put it out there. What will endorse, you know, the attachments will indicate that we believe that this is not a, you know, we are very close to our housing. This really doesn't, by any objective standards, forward our affordable housing goals, that we believe that it's not the best, you know, use of the land, that the best use of the land is for a municipal use.
I thought the three letters were very good.
Yeah. So, I think, you know, basically, I would do some, you know, maybe something very short summary along those lines, and then, you know, invite them to contact us if they have any questions.
Okay.
All right?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Contracts for the 1870 Town Hall.
Not in yet.
So, who are we waiting for?
We're waiting for them to review the list of additions, supplemental...
Them is the contractor?
Yep, Antonellus.
When is our end date for this?
Hard to say, really, because we were supposed to have a contract for five days, is what Town Council originally said.
Which we submitted to them.
We did. So, we're just waiting for them to...
Yeah, I think they...
So, the ball's in their court.
The ball is in their court.
I can send an email and just check in.
Yeah. And certainly invite them if they have any questions or something, hang them up. Let's get it out there and deal with it.
All right. I'm gonna pause it here. Oh, yes, and we don't have any Asian longhorn beetles.
All right.
That's good news.
And...
Unless what?
You can put in some trees taking out for free.
Not that many.
Yeah.
I saw those parts of Worcester that day.
And we only have to worry about that for what, another two and a half, three weeks? Because Donald Trump's going to deport them all.
All the Asian longhorn beetles?
Yes. You heard it here first.
Put that out on Twitter.
Yeah.
All right. We have the police chief regarding the police, communications, data systems, and dog officer budgets.
Couple of budgets, yeah.
Just a few.
So, all right. Where do you want to start?
Well, let me give everyone here their copies.
I only made those two copies for you.
That's when we'll start, then.
All right. You got that last note that I sent to you?
And then June added some stuff, too.
After that?
Mm-hmm. So, I said that's everything.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I mean, I was working on some documents late in the day and didn't check emails after about five.
Okay. So, on the police budget this year, in terms of salary and wages, the only thing you see is our contractual obligations and the pay raises that are built into the contract. So, that's step raises and the cost of living raises. So, there's nothing, nothing that jumps out there.
And that was what, 2.5?
2.5.
Yeah.
For, so as we go through expenses, a few things have dropped off this year, but the biggest thing to change you'll notice in expenses under our firearms training, we've had quite a jump in the costs there. It's more than doubled. Reason is, is we've done some nighttime shooting this year, and we noticed some real deficiencies. Our problem is, is that we utilize, since I've been here and even before, we've utilized a range in Hudson, and we're limited on when we can shoot at night there and actually do the training that we need to do. So, the, there's a, basically, a $4,200 increase in our firearms training, which is gonna allow us to join a department membership to a indoor range in Worcester, which allows us to, anytime, to do low light or nighttime training. So, it's a state-of-the-art facility. They have a setup where we can go in, shut the lights off, flip on blue lights, and come up with a myriad of scenarios to allow the officers to train. You know, half of our time is spent at night, and we did notice some serious deficiencies in night shootings, so we get to get that up to speed.
And when, but, how, where did you, how did you notice the deficiencies?
We did a nighttime shoot. It was tough. We had to actually cancel. We only got to do about half the department because of the time restrictions that we had with Hudson, and we've noticed some problems. So, with this, every time we go and shoot, a portion of it can be in the dark, so, which we really need to, need to do. Other than that, there's nothing that really jumps out this year. There are a few other things that I knocked off and a couple of other things, some contractual services that are in there, but not, I think last year our actual expenses had lowered. You know, we're up a little bit higher than we were two years ago, but not, not a lot. And then the last on police would be one capital request this year, and that would be to replace the Ford Taurus administrative vehicle. The plan is to go with a plug-in hybrid.
Oh, wow.
I have done, I've gone to some things that DEP has put on, test drove several vehicles, looked at some different options. The Chevy Volt seems to be the best option that I've found at this point. It could change, but, so what I would be looking to do is, the price that I put in the capital crest, the $36,500, is actual, the actual cost of what the vehicle would be. But there's a $5,000 grant that would be immediate from DEP as long as the money's still there. They only have about $200,000 left in it right now. They're not sure if it's gonna be funded. I would guess with what the governor has set for goals for electric vehicles on the street, they are gonna refund the program, and then the money from the trade-in of the old vehicle would be used for the outfit and the lights and those things.
And the charging station?
So, this, it comes with a plug-in for 110, so what I actually is, would get two of those. We wouldn't be doing a charging station this year. Charging station would come next year through the Green Communities Grant when we're allowed to apply again.
Can't apply next year.
I thought this year we can't apply.
We can't apply?
This year.
No, I, I got a grant for FY '16.
Right, so we can't...
FY '17 we can't, because...
We can apply...
Well...
FY '18?
The grant, we're in the middle of a project now, so we can't reapply during that project. Once that's done, which will be another year, then we'll be able to apply again.
Yep.
And then that would be my hope, is that maybe we can convince a couple of other departments that they can use some all-electric vehicles for maybe inspections and other things, and those can be paid for completely out of the Green Communities Grant. So, we'll see.
Good.
Good.
Any questions?
No.
No? Okay, I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2018 police budget as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So, next would be communications.
Which you don't have copies of.
I can, when I look...
You know what? Do you, I don't know that you, do you want anything besides the cover pages? Do you want all the backups?
I can just look on yours if you want.
I'll just look at the cover page for a moment.
Yeah, so on communications this year, obviously, our salaries are all but going away. What we did include for full-time wages is what would be the administrative person out front. So, you see quite a reduction in wages. The assessment for the regional center is our major expense. We also have the reverse nine-to-one system, which I left in that instead of moving it to the police budget. And unfortunately, our radio system is still on phone lines, so we still will have a couple of phone bills we have to pay. My hope is in the coming year or two that we can switch that through a grant to get off a copper wire. So, we actually would have a, over $22,000 reduction overall in communications this year, even adding a front desk person, so. And that doesn't include our other reductions on the benefits end that Dennis will see from the less, losing, what, three full-time employees?
And of course, it doesn't include all the equipment stuff and everything.
Everything else that we're avoiding.
Or the unemployment.
And what, and, yeah, and what we're getting in terms of the new phone system, which is in the process right now.
Oops. I wrote on this, Mary. What did I do?
I wrote on, maybe someone gave me a clean copy.
There you go.
I'm supposed to be signing these. Probably needs the cover.
So, are you gonna be hiring someone once this goes over to regional?
Yeah, I hope in a week or two. I am finishing a final draft on a job description to be able to come back to you on that and then post it and hire right away.
Okay.
And is that a 40-hour position?
Be a 40-hour position, yeah.
And you're gonna share whoever this is with the fire department?
With the fire, so, yeah. The fire chief and I have been going over the job description.
Any other questions?
No.
I would move to approve the communications budget as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Data systems, my favorite.
Yeah.
And I gotta tell you, I'm actually kind of enjoying it right now. I shouldn't say that, but... I shouldn't.
Can you show that in a minute?
So... For data systems this year, just a small, you know, salary increase. The big increase comes in our contractual services. So, I've looked into a lot of different things this year. Obviously, our, we've switched now, as of a couple of days ago, to CMGeek says our IT service provider. That was a great reduction in cost from what we were paying privately. We have had problem after problem after problem with our email, so I looked into a couple of different alternatives for email systems. Doing our own hosted, having our own server where we would host it, which would create a cost to purchase the server, software for the server, license, continued licensing. But one thing that struck me is security. So, if we hosted our own email system, we could get a service that scans the email prior to coming into the building for viruses and those things. It actually runs $12 per email account.
Per year or per month?
Per month.
Oh, that's a little bit hefty.
Yes. So, and then in terms of then, like, the capital costs and everything, we would be doing maintaining a system on our own. If we were to go to a Google-based enterprise email account system, it's $10 a month per account. That covers all that scanning, that covers all of our archiving, it gives us shared calendars, shared documents, a lot of the things that we've been looking for here at a much lower overall cost with no capital investment.
And do they do municipal business at this point?
They do municipal business. The backups they do, you know, you can, you know, with public records, you hit the, you hit the delete button on your computer, it gets deleted from your computer. It never leaves the cloud. It never leaves Google's servers. So, if we need it, we make a request to them and they can produce it for us.
And presumably, they've vetted that service in terms of public records?
Yeah.
And they've documented that?
Yeah. It's, it's, I had actually one talking FinCom last year, I think Scott mentioned going, their, his company going to an all-Google environment. So, it's, it seems to be the best option. There's no capital investment, and I think it's gonna improve our, our day-to-day as a business, it's gonna improve our, what we do every day, and we need it.
So, you can use Google Mail on Outlook?
You can use it on Outlook, you can use it on anything. People will be able to access their mail anywhere.
So, it's the same, like, regular Gmail?
Like Gmail.
You can just pull up Chrome and...
And go in and access it. What I've also included in the budget is our new copiers, which we already have. That, I was able to cover that by, based on the reduction in the IT service costs, so we've had the copiers replaced. We had a little training today for some people that were here on that. We also, my next big thing is the phone system. So, I showed you or sent you that a couple of weeks ago, that for a small capital investment, which was the capital request I have for this year, and I gotta fix that, sorry, the number's wrong. But it's about a $6,000 capital investment.
Not the 20?
Not the 20. Sorry. I'll, I'll get you a clean sheet. And, and then a monthly bill that would be less than our overall monthly phone bill. Unfortunately, for this year, and I talked with June quite a bit, because we wouldn't be sure if we would be starting this July 1st or January 1st, they would still have to put in the other budgets, the other phone bill costs. But ultimately, after it's in place, the capital cost of $6,000 with what we currently pay in phone bills and service for our current phone system, we'd make up half the capital cost in a year and the full capital cost in two years.
So, right now, they all have their own copper-installed lines? And that would take, that would get rid of all of those lines?
Yeah. We would go to an internet-based phone system, which we will have redundancy through the regional center. We'll have two internet sources. We'll have updated voicemail system, caller ID, all the services that we don't currently have, we will get. I was, I was really amazed at the, the low cost of, I thought the capital investment would be much more.
Voice over IP, I mean...
And then the last thing is, is the, the emergency alert system that we got a grant for this year. My goal is to apply for that same grant. It's not in place yet here, but that would cover us through next year, but I did put the cost in in case the grant doesn't, doesn't become available. So, although we do see, you know, kind of a large jump in the data systems budget, I think if you look at, I mean, it's, it's a small number in reality compared to the total budget, but compared to the data systems budget, it's a large jump. With what we're doing to increase services, it's really a small, small number, so. And eventually, we'll wipe out all the phone costs, everybody else.
Sounds good.
Really good. I would make a motion to approve the IT budget as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then this one's easy. This is, all you have is the, the COLA increase on the...
Dog officer.
The dog officer wages, everything else.
Are you calling it dog officer? It should be animal control officer.
Okay, I will, I can change that.
What's the other, what's the other position?
I think, animal inspector. I mean, it's a title position, but it's, it's the budget. I don't think it matters what we call the budget. It's the title position is ACL, but it's...
To match this law.
Yeah.
So, this is Helen?
This is Helen.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would move to approve the dog officer, animal control officer budget as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And that's it?
All right.
Good. Feeling good on that, huh?
I think, again, we spoke about it last time, but I think it, it will be important to get a communication out to people when the doors go locked and everything, and to get that posted and so on, so people understand.
Yeah, I spoke to the item today, so they'll be doing an article on it, and then...
And do we have a text or a description that we can put, like, you know, up on the website?
I will put something together that we can put out.
Because I think it would be worth...
Yeah, we've been trying to answer the questions as they come in, but I think we need to post something and have it out there for people.
Yeah, otherwise...
Physically posted in the building.
Because if you think you're getting questions now, the first day the door is locked.
Well, and you need...
Then you're gonna get questions.
Yeah, what we're gonna have to come up with is, when are they going to be unlocked? I mean, we need to keep them unlocked whenever there's a scheduled meeting, but then the question will be how long, you know, what's the, what's the cutoff?
I will scan around for that.
Okay.
And sort of, I mean, do people know how to, you know, arrange for that? Get, I mean, you know, I'm saying like...
So, what we'll be able to do with the system is if, if, I will have administrative access to it, and we can just set the times in the computer that it leaves the building.
But what I mean is, you know, how will people get that to the person who's setting in there? Are there other people in you who are setting it?
Yeah, I think if we're using the, the online meeting stuff, you know, that we do, the town government, what's our, where do you post them?
Yeah, my town government.
My town government.
That's not how rooms are, that's just the posting room.
Right. But that's when it has to be unlocked, when, when this public meeting, so we'll come up with a system when, because you're notified when someone's reserving a room?
No.
No.
They ask me to reserve a room.
Right.
The room isn't necessarily reserved. My town government and me are separate. They should be the same, but they're not.
Right. No, but I mean, I'm talking, if someone, someone outside of town government, the scouts or somebody's reserving a room, they would be going through you.
Right.
And we can communicate on that.
Okay.
What I'd like to do for the scouts and the people that use it regularly is maybe issue one access card for the scouts, and we know that the scouts are coming in and we can track that, so.
All right.
So, if someone, just pass me that one. If someone comes in and wants to get into the offices, can Nishoba buzz them in?
Yes.
Okay.
Once, yes.
Once it's...
Once, once everything's done, yes.
Done.
Yeah, they'll be able to get buzzed in.
How would they know?
So, there'll be a call box and...
No, no, how would they know that they're authorized to buzz someone in?
We can, there's a couple of ways we can handle it with them, with an authorized list of people, but also a lot of it, they may just get buzzed into the, the police department lobby and get verified, you know, an officer can come in up the street and be like, okay, go ahead, you can go upstairs now. So, and we can give them access to the rest of the building.
Yeah, and I think it's things like that that we need to...
Yeah.
Think about and get on a list because, and we will never think of everything.
No, and there's gonna be some growing pains, you know, and it's, it's gonna happen, but we'll, we'll get there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it is the times, and to have the building as open as it is is unusual in these days.
Yes. Excellent.
All right. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Oh, we're kind of on time.
Yes, we are.
Yeah. 7:30, interview with Richard Hanks about temporary building inspector coverage.
That's me. Yes.
Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. All right, we have, everyone has a resume.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you start out by telling us a little bit about your background and your experience?
Okay, I mean, I've been a certified building official for 19 years. I've been working with Town of Townsend all that time, and as you can see, various interim, interims in various places, and also as alternate inspectors. Long construction background, been in construction practically all my life, and then through injuries, I got out of construction, became a building official, and that's been my career path since then.
I noticed that presently, you're an alternate building inspector for Ashburnham, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you're also an assistant inspector for the new school project. Is that still going on?
Ashburnham School has been finished. That's been finished for a couple of years now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's gone.
Okay. You're a part-time building commissioner for Templeton?
Yes.
And you're full-time for Townsend?
Correct.
Can you tell me how you, you're gonna have time to do that?
That's what I saw when I looked.
Well, I, I go do my best, and Townsend is a four-day week for me, so I have Fridays off.
How many hours?
Do I work in Townsend?
Yeah.
Forty.
Okay.
And Templeton is very part-time, they're a small town, there is not much activity. I do a couple hours of office time, and I just do inspections as needed. I live in Gardner, Templeton's right next door, so sometimes early mornings, sometimes at night, sometimes at weekends, it's whatever it takes to, to get it done. Again, I can devote Fridays to you, I can adjust my schedule a little bit in Townsend, so, so I can cover inspections as needed throughout the week, or, or as needed. I could probably get here early mornings if need be, if, if someone needs something going on, my day starts in Townsend at 9:00 AM, so.
Okay. And remind me, how long do we anticipate this to go on?
Sounded like he didn't... The surgeon said that he would be out in a day or two, and that he should be walking around in a, in a week, but that doesn't mean return to work day, he doesn't have a return to, even forecasted yet.
Okay, okay.
I guess it's a, see how it goes.
Yeah, 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 no, I, I understand, I was just wondering, you know, sort of order of magnet, you know, order of magnitude, but this probably has the potential for going on for a month or two, it sounds to me, all, you know, all things...
Considered.
Being equal and considered, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that was my big question, too. You're busy.
I'm a busy person, yes. I don't sleep much.
Oh, well, so, they're using GOTMS right now, have you had any experience with that?
No.
Okay.
No. Does the admin person have experience with it?
She's learning.
Okay.
She's...
Is she a good teacher?
Relatively new. Probably is a good teacher.
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, yeah, she, she just started...
But she's only got about six months into, I mean, in total experience, anyway.
She, she's running it quite...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, she is, she will be a good resource for you.
Good.
Well, so, have you done commercial?
Done a lot of commercial. Right now, Townsend has a new high school going up, highly involved in that, you saw they did the J.F. Briggs Elementary School, Townsend did a fire station, a senior center, a new library, Sterilite is headquarters in Townsend, we've done, they've done some office renovations, a few apartment complexes.
Okay, so Larry, has Larry talked to you about, we have the Highland Commons Mall on the other side of 495, that half of that is in Berlin?
Right.
And they're just producing buildings, right? Here's our fire...
As fast as they can dig the hole.
Right. So that would be our big commercial section, would be that, theoretically, in the spring, but Larry should be back. We have another project that would be a hotel and possibly some apartments starting also.
Okay. My, my goal is to keep you up afloat, keep the head, your heads out of water while Larry's recouping.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, he's not off for a really long duration.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Maybe he'll come back at some point in limited capacity, but, you know, maybe, you know, if I can keep you afloat in the meantime.
Okay.
And you are available at least one day a week, it sounds like Friday's...
Yeah, Friday could...
...to be here, okay?
Right.
Okay.
So I guess Friday, I could use that for a lot of admin, administrative work as to what's coming up, new plans for review and stuff like that, and inspections as needed, and again, I can, you know, work with the administrative personnel and find out what's coming up from inspections, what people are looking for, as long as I get a little bit of notice, I can try and squeeze them in as, as needed.
Okay.
Sounds like you have good organizational skills with how busy you are. So, I don't know if you have...
Well, cell phones are, are, are a must, you know, it's, I find with Templeton is probably 95% of that job is people being able to get a hold of me on my phone, I don't need to be there all the time, as long as they can get a hold of me...
Right.
And talk to me, that's, that's probably 95% of that job, because it's, I give that cell, my cellphone number out to people, and they say, call me whenever, if I don't answer the email message, I will call you back, and that's, that usually keeps people quite happy, as long as you get the phone call back.
That's right. Sounds good.
I don't know, I don't have any other questions.
Dave, you have any? Dave is our fire inspector.
Dave, Richard Hanks, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Larry's surgery is Friday.
Pardon me?
Larry's surgery is Friday.
Oh, this Friday, yeah.
Yeah, we thought we'd, we'd make a decision tonight, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, working under pressure, you know, wait, wait the last possible morning.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you have any questions?
I guess, yeah, I have a few. I guess the only concern I would have would be, how would you end up handling, right now, some of the fast-paced construction that we have going on, puts a lot of demands on different days during the week. We've come quite a ways, I've been doing, as an inspector, for 15 years, and we were doing it like one day a week, and now it's, it's almost like full five days a week. So I'm just wondering how we could handle getting inspections done to meet the contractors' needs, to keep them happy, so things aren't being missed, you know, during the construction phase, or, or being, you know, skipped over, I guess, if you will, so...
So, so are you typically going out daily?
Yes.
Then...
As well as timeframes, what happens unfortunately with, like, the developer up here, they'll put a target date of opening on a Tuesday, so they're looking for all their final sign-offs on a Monday, so they'll have me scheduled to go in and do testing, and then the building inspector will follow right behind me.
But you have notice of that, right?
Uh, pretty much, yes, so I don't know how you can schedule, you know, bountiful day.
How much advance notice, I mean, it would seem to me, if they're doing a target date of opening, they're gonna know that by like Wednesday of this week, right?
Well, sometimes they don't share that whole, all of that information with us.
I think we, we need to communicate that, but it seems to me, an, an opening on a Tuesday doesn't happen, and, and I think the key to this is gonna be getting the word out to them, that, you know, you need to know...
Well, that's, that's, that's gonna be the question, the, the critical thing is, I'm gonna need some advanced notice, so I can adjust my schedule around, again, if, if I have to come here early morning, or whatever time it's gonna work to try and get it done, to accomplish the goal, then, then that's when I'm gonna try and schedule, but I can't, like, someone can't tell me on a Monday, can you be there Tuesday morning? That might get a little tough, if, if I can get a 48-hour notice, then I can juggle things around with my other commitments and, and try and make it work.
Okay. I mean, I can get the word out with the developer, and, because I'm up there every day, and actually, that's what we require, and we have that on paper that we require...
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours notice.
Right.
So, you know, so we have time, too, because it is so busy that, you know, to be in different locations...
You know, and, and the flip to it, too, is that if, if, if I know I gotta be a, a couple days for a couple hours in a row, then I could take some of my Friday time from here and give it back to Townsend.
Right, right.
You know, again, I can juggle my schedule a little bit, and...
Does 48 hours work for you?
Yeah, that, that could work.
Okay. And we have 48 hours in place?
Yes.
So then, it seems to me, the key is to be sure that, when we get that 48-hour notice, that you, you get it at the same time.
Right, yeah, communication's gonna be key, is that...
Right.
Would that go to, would that ordinarily go to Leanne at the same time as it goes to you, or do you...
Not necessarily, because a lot of times, things don't work out when they call me, because something's not working with the fire alarm system, so, usually Larry didn't have that 48-hour window, so, they, that would have to be key in how it goes with my inspection.
So we need to, we need, okay, so what you're saying is, there's a 48-hour, it's in place for the fire, but it's not in place for general inspections?
Right.
Okay, so we need to get that word to them, that they need, at least during this interim period, to give us 48 hours, or, you know, it's at their risk, you know? So I think we need to communicate that. Do you, um...
I'm sorry.
If, because we're talking, obviously, about the balance of January and maybe into the middle of February.
Mm-hmm.
Can, can you just take maybe a couple of minutes and indicate what you think is in the pipeline for that, like, the next four to six weeks up there?
Right now, probably the critical one will be Emerson Hospital, the urgent care.
Okay. A pro-press?
I know, the, one of the key holdups is the transformer, they didn't, never ordered that, so they, they don't have electricity.
Okay.
The building's almost complete, but...
So you're expecting movement on that in the next...
I would say within the next week or two.
Okay. And then, in the next four to, or so weeks, anything else that's really, you can see is gonna be popping?
Probably the residential homes down on Green Acres.
Okay, that's always an emergency.
But none of the other commercial, it might be some low day-to-day stuff.
Okay.
Nothing that's gonna be ready to...
The bank won't be in, or the mullahs, or...
No, the bank won't be open, they won't be opening till, I would say, April.
Okay.
So we should be in good, good shape with those items, as well as the two treatment plants, the pumping station, those, they're just getting the build, the steel up on those. I know the highway burn, the steel is not being set for that until, or start, not showing up until March 1st.
Okay, so that's...
So that should be...
Okay.
So, other than the urgent care, I think we're, there's nothing that's really gonna be pressing.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry to derail you and ask that question.
No, it's okay.
But you, I think, had other questions as well?
I don't, how you handle, right now, where they changed over the fire and sprinklers, and they took it away from the fire departments, with the building code and so forth?
Right.
How do you handle that with Townsend? We, we've, we've kept it here, transparent, because Larry didn't want anything to do with the fire and sprinkler systems, so we still handle it, we just do it behind the scenes, so it's like transparent, so the building, it's, building department really has nothing to do with it.
Well, you, you, even with the change, you're, you're still required to, to work in conjunction with us as far as plan review and comments?
Right.
So, so that, that never went away, and that was something I was gonna ask you, when you brought up some of these commercial projects, you, you're doing inspections, so are you doing the fire alarm testing, witnessing that, and the sprinkler test, flow, full test?
Yes.
So you're witnessing that stuff?
Yes.
Because it can be either one of us?
Right.
So you're already handling that aspect, so, and you're gonna keep doing it?
Yes.
You know, because that, that's one of the last thing I need to do, because you, you can witness it?
Right.
That's, that's more than, more than filing me.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's not a problem. I know we do have some other plans that are gonna be coming through the door, so I don't know whether you're gonna end up getting involved with reviewing that process, or...
Again, do you expect any really big plans coming in the door in the next four to six weeks? Are you gonna answer this now, but if you...
I would say probably at least four, for the new building right by Cabela's.
Okay.
Because we have two restaurants coming in, that we have at that, are ready to submit, so...
So that's something, though, that he can do at his leisure, well, not at his leisure, but he can plan, like, on Friday.
I can take that home.
Yeah.
I can take that home.
No, no, and I just, I mean, I think as long as you're sitting here, I was asking you if you knew, so we can say sort of right away what you could be looking at in the next four to six weeks, yeah, okay? Any, any other major things that you could see is coming up in that timeframe? I mean, that sounds like enough.
Well, I mean, hopefully, I don't see, I don't foresee River Bridge really...
No.
Exploding, the way they've been progressing, so I don't see that's gonna be an influx.
Yep. The old town hall isn't due, start until April, late March, you know, early April, so that's...
Okay, I, we haven't even seen the final plans of the middle...
That was the 1870 town hall you mentioned earlier?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and, you know, again, if you think anything, you know, email it, but that, certainly, I have a better sense now of what you're gonna be up against, I hope that helps a little bit for you.
Yeah, so, so I'm gonna want your contact information and stuff, so that...
Yep, not a problem. And I can help out, my background's construction for 40 years, so...
Oh, good.
That was my real-time job, so, I'm well-versed in that, as well as certification as a fire inspector, so...
Good.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah.
I just need to know where the building department is, and get...
Next door on the left.
Next door on the left.
That's the bathroom.
That's the bathroom.
And, and what's the administrative person?
I'll email you everything.
Give me all the contact information?
Would we like to take a vote to hire Mr. Hanks as the interim?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
I'll do my best to keep, keep you above water till Larry comes back, I've known Larry for a long time, so he asked if I could help out, and I don't have a problem with that.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we do appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll be in Friday morning.
Indeed.
I'll see you. Thank you.
Thanks.
He's like, how'd you get the key, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That, that may be the first question you get, yeah.
Nope. Well, lost a paperclip here.
This is all good, so yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect.
It's a budget request, right?
Yep, some more budget approvals. Did we review the accountants?
Oh, yes, we did, never mind.
I do not have, I don't think we have any copies of any of these, do we? Accountants, we're, we're on to number nine, budget requests.
You know, I did have the one that you gave me, but then not the one that was... Let me make a couple of those.
I looked at it.
She changed, um...
She just added paragraphs, descriptions for the...
Right, but the budget was the same.
The budget's the same.
Yeah. So you should have the budget.
Did everybody look at it?
I looked at it.
Yeah, I, I went in, I spoke with her about it.
All right, so I should say, does everybody feel comfortable not having a copy? Yeah.
Yeah, I am covered.
Okay.
You want copies of those?
No.
Okay.
Well, not for the accountant. Okay, so, we have the budget for the accountant, the big thing in here is that part-time wages go up, Thomas, would you like to talk about that?
Sure. Can I take a look at the note, because she and I talked about it, and took some notes as she was... Yeah, basically, the request here, and I, we, we spoke about it last Thursday or Friday, I went in, talked with her for about half an hour, 45 minutes on it. She would like to increase the part-time wage hours from 25 to 35 hours. She is finding that the, um...
So, I don't...
The warrant process is taking up, you know, virtually the whole, just, you know, sort of production of warrants. The school expenses have become more complicated, more subject to review, one of the things that she indicated is that she is seeing more situations as we've had sort of new, new people, people who are not perhaps as, you know, clued into the budgetary process, working in some of our, you know, and these are, you know, volunteer-appointed positions, and, you know, they're, they're doing the work of the job, but they're less...
Financially...
Financially aware and so on, and she's, she's finding that more of the sort of general bookkeeping beyond warrants and checking things is running there, which personally, I don't think is necessarily inappropriate, because, you know, if you're, if you are, if you're appointing somebody who's gonna be enthusiastic about recreation and stuff like that, or some, and I'm not saying they were one of the departments that had the problems, but, or, you know, council on aging, I mean, if you can get somebody who's enthusiastic and out there doing the work, and is, you know, maybe weak on submitting or checking or adding the things, then, you know, to have that stuff done in a, in a central sort of bookkeeping function is to me not, you know, not an unreasonable expectation. Obviously, you know, with reporting, and so on, you know, there is now sales tax adjustments, meals tax adjustments, um...
So there's more work involved?
More work in terms of documenting revolving funds, et cetera, you know, regulation has increased. June feels that she is regularly working, you know, considerably more than 40 hours, and she feels that she can't keep up that. And that she has an assistant who's capable of taking on some of those things, and so therefore, it's an economical, you know, way to approach it. FinCom did ask last time, because we increased from, I believe it was 19 to 25, if I remember, in terms of hours last year, they did ask whether we would be asking for further increases, and the response then was, we might, that, you know, there were a lot of, you know, things changing, a lot of things shifting, and we might indeed come in. So that shouldn't come as a complete surprise either.
Okay.
And that is detailed in the letter, because I did suggest to June, and again, we talked through what should be in it, that if we are going to FinCom and we are asking for an increase in those hours for the second year, that we ought to have, you know, a written justification for it.
Okay. Any other comments?
I can't imagine the paper that she was talking about in this letter.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, she and I sat down, and she showed me some of the stuff. Yeah.
Where is it going?
Downstairs, where we have to keep it for a certain number of years.
Yeah, so.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I would move to approve the accountant's budget as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have the personnel committee, and there's no change in that budget?
Oh, yes. One of the things that I wondered about in this year is if we are looking for, to consider, for instance, a town administrator, to consider an HR position, you know, whatever, whether we should put some money in there for planning and consulting to support that. And I was wondering about something in the, you know, three to five K range at a minimum to consider that.
Well, I was wondering about, I found this one, and the fact that Liz is with what?
Deutsch Williams.
Deutsch Williams has kind of gone and said that some of our personnel policies could use a little updating.
That's also on here, yeah.
And I wasn't sure if we wanted to put money for that under personnel, or put money for that in legal.
Well, I would say, we've already proved a legal budget that I think is going to be adequate, and that this could be done. This, or Deutsch Williams doing it, could probably be done under the legal budget with a reasonable expectation.
Okay.
But what I'm talking about is, you know, whether we have.
Oh, you want to actually have an HR person?
Well, or at least put in, you know, $4,000 or $5,000 so that we can maybe get, you know, a municipal consultant in to.
To look over.
Yeah, to look over that and to talk about, you know, consider the sort of town administrator need, the HR need.
Just happen to have all these descriptions for a human resource assistant, director of human resources, and there's the assistant town administrator, human resource director.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I'm, you know.
Yeah, yeah. So you would put that under part-time salary?
No, I would put that under purchase of services.
Okay.
And again, if we don't use it, it just goes back, you know, back to the town, but I think it's not realistic to think that we could address those issues without some kind of, you know, external help.
Right.
So I would, I would move to amend this budget by adding $5,000 to purchase of services.
Contracted services?
Contracted services. Again, for the purpose of examining the HR and town administrator functionalities.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we need to do an explanation or something for the, or are we just going to go in and we just go in?
I can bang out what you just said.
Yeah, if you bang out what you just said and send it, I can tweak it a little bit, and then we can put that in. And yes, no, I do think we have to have a written explanation, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel committee budget?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have public buildings. So the increases here are in full-time wages. Well, we've taken part-time wages, moved them to full-time, and this is the, taking Stephen Bradley from the 1870 Town Hall budget? I'm trying to read.
Yeah, no library.
The library budget.
There's no removal only, because he's already taking care of libraries.
So it looks like a $3,200 increase, but it's not, because that money's coming out of the library budget.
Well, library's like $500 or something. So it's also providing more hours, because instead of running him through 1870s revolving account for any time there's an event, Keith would have that built into municipal buildings.
Okay.
Okay.
And also, since there's not a custodian on staff here, if anyone were needed to come over here to do jobs here.
Yeah, some kind of spill or emergency.
Okay, and the other piece, under purchase, under expenses, that's increased $1,460, and it looks like 1,200 of that is bottled water. It's going from 400 to 1,100.
Wow.
There's a little increase in bark mulch, but that's the majority of the increase.
$1,100, couldn't we serve something better in the coolers?
I think that might be because maybe those bottles have been getting refilled somewhere.
I don't know.
I mean, like, you take an empty bottle and you refill it with water and put it back in the cooler versus actual bottled water.
No, we get, you mean, the seagulls, we do get bottled water served.
Well, I don't know what that'd be. Doesn't have any description for it.
I assume he means Nestle, which brought up Palm Springs. There's no description, so I don't know.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Might ask him about that. All right, municipal building electricity. I would say that biggest bill will not change because we opted out. So we opted out for the municipal building of the municipal aggregation because the industrial rate was, but on the other hand, we are going to start our net metering credits, which would be 25%, but I'm not sure of the date. Have you heard anything more from him?
No.
So he sent us an email last month asking for us to get our DPU number, and what was, there were two things.
We got a DPU, I don't know.
Oh, he wanted a list of all of our electric accounts.
Okay.
Because I sent him that. So I would presume that, so this is the solar array that's going in in Clinton, and we, like, over a year ago, signed up to get a 25% off our electric bill. But I'm not sure when that's going to happen, so I guess I would just leave it at this for now.
I would, yeah, level funded and.
But it should go down.
Yeah, at level, because that should give us a buffer against certainly any increase. And, okay, I would move to approve at level funding.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, municipal phone is level funded. Do I hear a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can the chief mention that, that this may be superseded, but?
Streetlights are level funded.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel committee. Okay, so we asked, they wanted to increase the assessor assistant administrator to grade levels. Is that not what this is about? Request to reconsider the classification, and we pushed back and said we wanted to know why she felt, instead of just one level, that it would be two levels.
She's saying that the equivalent that you reclassified the post at was basically just giving the post a COLA update, when you look at the percentage increase, when really, she was not looking, just because someone was about to top out in their grade. She was looking for reclassification because the job changed, and so she was asking for reconsideration on the grade and step, which I think it's just one step off what she requested. But what she's saying is just giving it a COLA, and in fact, is not what she was looking for.
Well, she's at grade five, step 11, which is $20.45. And we put her at grade six, level seven, which is 2,137.
And wasn't that pretty much what she requested in terms of money?
She asked for a 6.8, and that's what she's asking for reconsideration.
So 6.8 is 2,185, and we're 50 cents below what she was asking for per hour.
Okay.
She's at grade five, step 11, 2,045. It's changed dramatically over the, this position in Rose, so she wants it at grade six, step eight, at 2,136.
All right, so there are two questions here. One is, and we did reclassify it as a grade six from a grade five.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so that we've done, okay? Okay, and now, what we're talking about is to give her another step as part of.
So from 20, 2,137, she wants it to go from level seven to, well, we call it step, step seven to step eight, which is 2,185. 2,185, right now, we put her at.
It's another 50 cents an hour.
Yes, we put her at 2,137.
I, you know, I guess I don't, I don't have a huge objection to that. I just would note that we have, we don't have to re, she's not asking for a reclassification beyond what we have already done. We're really just talking about whether we give this person another step or not.
I don't know.
Can I take a look at the review again?
Well, here's the review, part of it.
Okay, I mean, it's all very good and excellent, certainly.
So we redid it and gave her a 4.5% increase. They're asking for a 6.8% as a reclassification and revised job description, which is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm slightly confused by the suggestion that this is just a COLA, because it isn't.
I'm sorry, not just a COLA, but it would be the equivalent, she's saying, of a step increase that includes the COLA. So it'd be like, as she's saying, any other employee getting a step increase, it would be 4.3% is what it ended up being for.
That was her increase from this year for next year?
That's the increase we gave, yes. From grade five, step 11 to grade six, step seven is 4.5%. And that's, but that's 92 cents an hour, so almost a dollar an hour increase. They're asking for a $1.40 increase, or 6.8.
And all of the assessors accept this, presume?
I'm going to presume that. There's nothing here that says that.
If the, you know, I'm willing to sign it as personnel committee, the assessors, if the board of assessors and the professional assessor have requested it, they also have to make this case to FinCom. So I would move to approve as they requested.
Second.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Uh, no, I think you might, I don't know whether FinCom knows that they have the ability to.
Not approve.
Approve that.
No, they approved the budgets.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that they think salaries are given, but I could be wrong.
Well, typically, if personnel approves something, that they're not going to.
Right.
Fight it.
Right.
I wouldn't fall back on personnel, but I would say that I'm, well, whatever.
Yes, you will, you'll.
Go ahead, say it.
No, I was going to say that I wouldn't be prone to be giving anything, it's reclassified, and it's going up a grade and a step. So I would think that next year, you'd have to rethink if you were going to give another step. Right? I mean, it's a new job.
What I understood them to be saying is that.
There's a lot new bench.
With the redesign of the job, that they feel that the $1.50 is an appropriate raise because the job is increasing. It's not just topping out and a step. That's, I think that's their argument.
Okay. So I heard a motion to approve this. All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
No, you were.
I did second it.
Do you want this signed somewhere?
No, we just have to change the.
The evaluation form on the back where you make your recommendation.
We need to change that.
Do you not have the original on there?
I don't think so. No, I don't.
And I guess it wouldn't surprise me if this was, you know, popped out to FinCom, they would ask about it. I mean, we were talking about increasing the hours on the accountant's work. I mean, I fully expect we're going to be asked that.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah.
All right, so we approved six, level eight, and the wage is 2,185. Consider special town council review of personnel policy regarding the drug testing.
I think it's reasonable to do that, because we have used them in union matters, and that's a significant portion of, you know, of the concerns. I mean, I think in terms of general policies, you know, a couple of them on page could do it as well, but I think the fact that we have the union personnel, it's probably good to have them do it. And we have, I think, sufficient money in the budget to look at this, and it's something that, I mean, it's a sea change. We've got to look at it.
Right. You're talking about Deutsch Williams, then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to request that special town council, to request a special town council to present us an estimate for.
Reviewing the personnel drug policy. Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you're going to get an estimate as a cost.
Yeah, they're not proceeding without it.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Okey-dokey. Fire department revised fee schedule. So I asked for, whoops, some verbiage on some of this.
Right, and we passed over this last time, because you were the one who had the most questions, so.
Well, I just thought it needed to be clarified a little. So a brush burning permit, you will apply for once, and then that allows you to call up as many times as you want to ask for the permission to burn.
Right.
It's a one-time fee.
Right.
Just want to make that clear.
Actually, it'd be an online request to burn and not calling the dispatchers.
Well, you call, oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But when you call them, you don't have to pay for it.
Each time? No, it's once for the season.
Yes.
You'll have a permit number or something.
Yeah. Okay. Do I hear special events, circus events, horse show, and public show? Well, we did have circuses down at Solomon Pond a couple times.
Mm-hmm. Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing date for Complete Streets.
Is this a planning board hearing for?
No, it seems as it's the selectmen, and they want to see that it was passed with a public hearing first. Exactly what the guidelines are, I don't know. I mean, putting up on Facebook and the town's website and posting it might be sufficient advance notice to people.
Do we need a two-week's notice, or is this?
Oh, I guess it wouldn't hurt. Two weeks is always a magic number.
Yeah, why don't you do two weeks? So it would be Martin Luther King on the 17th.
Two weeks from tonight.
17th is the Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll post it tonight, so that we can do it then?
Yep.
Yep. Special counsel requests for information. Did you hear anything back?
They are asking for clarification. No, I didn't hear back from Keith. And so I guess they're kind of asking the selectmen slash personnel, I don't have it in front of me, but Deutsch Williams wants to know if there's any other policies they need to be aware of as they start to, you know, work. of as they start, you know, working with the Teamsters on.
I mean, just generally have the Personnel bylaw.
That's what I, I gave them the link to our website, I said, this is everything I think we have.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
Maybe you could. And you haven't heard from Keith?
Not at all.
Maybe you can.
I think I got this email after I talked with him today.
You talked to him today and seen him today?
Yes, I was going to give you a little update if you'd like.
Okay, well, let's do the.
Whenever you get to it, but I didn't talk to him about that.
June sent me, she called me today, she had some reason, oh, I guess she asked a question about it, an executive session that happened back in 2017 that talked about.
Couldn't have been 2017.
2007, sorry, 2007. Yeah, I, I parked the Tardis out, out front.
I can see the future.
In the handicapped zone. Sorry, 2007.
Okay.
The, there was some discussion of highway personnel compensation, personal days, et cetera, that was discussed. I'm not sure that anything here, or certainly not a lot of it, was ever enacted, but this was, is there and we might as well send it to Council.
Okay, and you should send it to Keith, too.
Yep, copy Keith and, okay?
He's aware of it.
No, and I think it's, it's a dead letter, but.
Right.
Anyway.
Okay.
I'm, I'm certainly not aware of anything, I mean, the job descriptions and so on, that's all a matter.
Well, so he asked about the drug testing policy, covering the practice that's now in place, before Keith Denny had contracted with a company that they continue to use now, that the spot testing once a month pulls some guy, including Keith, off and does random drug testing, but there's no policy in place, it's just a practice, but I think he's checking to confirm that's really the case, for example, or is there any other?
No, I think that was set by the department head, I'm not aware of us setting that as a policy.
So that's something that they should be aware of.
The policy we had was, you know, non-drug use, the department head was the one who established that practice for testing.
I can clarify that for him, but.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's about it.
That's it.
I think that is it. I just didn't know if there's anything else I didn't know, and Keith didn't answer, so I didn't know.
But I would say, you know, I'd say we have the Personnel policy, Keith did put together a bunch of stuff when we sort of revamped the.
We have job descriptions.
The titlings and the job descriptions, whatever Keith is putting together, that should be in it, that's the only, that's the only major chunk of stuff that I can think of.
Well, and, and he needs to answer if he has any department policies that we just aren't aware of.
And again, if he's, if there are any disciplinary actions or something, we wouldn't obviously know about that unless he phases them to us.
Okay, okay. All right, Mass Municipal Association Annual Business Meeting, Saturday, January 21st in Boston.
You going, Tom?
Nope.
Okay, no one's going?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that is the end of our agenda, is there any other business?
I will give you a couple of highlights of my conversation with the Highway Superintendent, if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah.
He talked about the Town Barn, that as of December 31st, they have halted construction for winter conditions.
Okay.
Because they were wanting to charge the town for that.
Charge it more because it's winter?
Well, probably charged to clear whatever they were going to be working on.
Okay.
And he and Tom Sanford agreed that they didn't want that extra charge, so he's assuming that it would probably, work on the Town Barn would pick up probably April 1st or before that if the weather's good.
Okay.
But April 1st probably dropped dead. About a third of the foundation is in. He gave me a little brief overview of his five-year plan that he'll be presenting with this budget or to the FinCom.
I'd like him to present it to us as well.
Okay.
Not just to FinCom.
Well, he was actually in his truck and we pulled over.
Oh, no, it's fine.
I called him and I, so he was talking off the cuff, but he talked about the roof of this municipal building and a street sweeper. The roof, at this point, probably wouldn't need replaced until 2021, but if you were going to replace it today, it'd be about $82,000 in 2021, it'll probably be.
More.
Who knows? The street sweeper, he was, is a 1980 and he may be asking for.
A 1990?
Yeah. Well, 140,000 to 150,000 is what he's thinking, and an air duct cleaning estimate he is looking into, and I thought he meant this building.
Yeah, he does.
That's really just about it, but if you wanted me to, I can ask him the questions, unless you're going to send an email about the department policies. Did you already do that?
No, I haven't sent him the email.
Okay.
I mean, I sent him an email asking him to advise on what Attorney Spenderbin was asking.
Right.
But he didn't answer that, he might have had a busy day.
Yeah.
So I can tack this on, but what you're saying is he plans to follow with capital requests, because he hasn't submitted any with his.
No, I think he said next week, for next Monday, he will have something for us.
Okay, capital request separate than his budget?
I'm assuming.
Okay, because June was asking about that, does he have no capital request, she says they weren't submitted and that's usually where the, supposed to be.
He's, I think he's going to look for what we'd like to do and what FinCom would like to do, whether it would be like this year or put off a year or two, for instance, the street sweeper or whatever, and the roof, of course, would be, it's not quite ready for that, but.
Okay.
Okay.
That's about it.
I can add that.
If you'd like to, if you, or if you want me to call him, I'll call him and see if he.
I'll put him right in.
Okay.
I'm already adding an email to him.
He doesn't respond, I'll give him a call.
Absolutely.
I think he's just busy, and I was too.
Yeah.
He didn't answer today.
Anything else?
No.
No, good.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.